I know, this is what happens, man. You get me fired up, this is what happens. I didn't let him leave my, uh, I didn't let him leave my side. Cause I figured I would, I would lay him up there and...
I'd run an all-in, yeah, exactly. Sit here and be there. I don't know where your name box is. I'll grab two. That got promoted.
I don't know. Well, they, they had, they had, David George, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all for coming to our final city council meeting for 2018. Would like to start with, uh, city government academy fall graduation. Dan?
Good evening, council, uh, for the record. My name is Dan Domsick with Fishers Parks and Recreation. Uh, tonight I have the honor of presenting our, uh, city government academy graduates, uh, for fall of 2018. For those that do not know, the Fishers City Government Academy is a free inside look at how local government operates here in Fishers. It's a ten-week program and a significant, uh, uh, time commitment for our residents. They learn about how their entire local government operates. This means they spend time, uh, with the sights and smells at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they learn from Judge Hankey on how he terrifies, uh, local speeders. Uh, and really just kinda get, uh, a really hands-on experience learning from our, uh, leaders in various departments and from our elected officials. Uh, city government academy graduates have gone on to, uh, work on various boards and commissions, uh, sit on city council and co-found, uh, Launch Fishers, which has just been an amazing, uh, grassroots economic juggernaut for Fishers. Uh, so it's been an absolute honor to, to work with these students every semester and I'm, uh, glad to present our newest graduates. Uh, so if council president Zimmerman and mayor Fadness, if you could join me up here. Uh, graduates, uh, when I read your name, if you don't mind coming forward for your customary congratulatory handshake and then, uh, lying up here in front, uh, for a quick picture. And then, uh, at the end, we'll meet out in, uh, the lobby for some wrap-up. Uh, but without further ado, your 2018 graduates. Jason McIntosh, Jeff Tees, Ron Hayes, Alice Hayes, Kathy Thompson, Connie Cochran, Bruce Cochran, Jay Banger, Elizabeth Farr, Jen White, Carla Diaro, Nathan Zimmerman, Jim Kingsolver, Roberta Page, Russell Slivka, and Andrea Davis. Your fall 2018 Fishers City Government Academy graduates. Thanks everyone. Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, Dan. Moving on to our city of Fishers employee milestone awards. Chief Gettler?
Thank you, council. I wanna say thank you for taking the time to allow us to recognize two of our longstanding employees. So before I do that, before I call them up, I'd just like to say that as, you know, as time goes on, time is our most valuable commodity. And certainly these two have given a lot of time to this city. So first, I'd like to call up Denise Calendrelli. Denise, you come forward. This is the awkward stand. So Denise has been employed with City of Fishers for twenty-five years. She started in December of nineteen ninety-three. She's here with her significant other Dave Kim, who also has twenty-five plus years of service to the City of Fishers as well. In December of nineteen ninety-three, we hired her as a, as a receptionist up front. She worked her way into records manager and then in two thousand, she was office manager and assigned to, directly to the chief of police. So she's trained a few chiefs now. She's doing pretty good at it. Her, uh, I didn't really have a total grasp of what Denise put into the agency until you get promoted in the fourth quarter and budgets are gonna close soon. And her instrumental, uh, knowledge of the money flow helped me greatly. So Denise, um, we thank you for serving the city. We thank you for serving, um, the community. And we thank you for support of our officers for twenty-five great years. So thank you. You ready, Jeff? Bring it. Officer Jeff Phelps has served the city for twenty years. He came to us in December of nineteen ninety-eight. He's here with his wife Carrie. Hand up, Carrie. There she is. I first met Jeff when I came to work for the city. Um, there's only a few of us out at the time, but Jeff is a senior officer at the time and he was often a supervisor of mine. And, uh, I really enjoyed those nights roaming around with Jeff, figuring things out in the City of Fishers. But more importantly than that, uh, there's a few things Jeff's been involved with for twenty years that's kinda shaped who we are and what we are. Jeff is a, a foundational member of our emergency response team, serving us as an operator. He went on some years later to serve us for seven years, the Boone County Drug Task Force, Boone-Hamilton County Drug Task Force, where he put seven years of undercover work in for this city. The greatest honor I can pay Jeff is that by all the officers in the room, certainly here for Denise as well, but Jeff is a cop's cop. And that's, that's the best thing I can say about who and what he is. So Jeff, for your service and all the, all the things you've done for the agency and for me myself, I really appreciate what you've done for your twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you to all of our officers. It's, you know, it's, um, it's really amazing work you do for our city to keep us feeling safe, uh, protecting our community. Especially in a room full of students here in the day and age we live in. We really appreciate not only what you do on the streets, but also what you do for the care for our, uh, students in their buildings, um, in the schools, you know, across our city. So I really appreciate everything. So thank you, all of you.
Alright, moving on.
Chief Gettler, you guys don't wanna stick around?
Feel free to go, it's alright. I'll override the mayor here. Alright, moving on. Um, we're gonna, uh, recognize, it's not our agenda, it kinda came up over the, um, end of last week. Uh, got notification that, um, two of our schools, uh, in our great community had, had become state champions in We the People. And I want them to share a little bit about what We the People is, uh, and, and how the program, um, really truly is transformative, I believe, for, for our country with regard to education, about our constitution. Uh, so what I'd like to do is first recognize, uh, Fishers Junior High. So, uh, Mike Fossil, if you would bring your crew up of students. They are, uh, state champions. Uh, uh, Mr. Fossil has... Let's see, so, so far, how many state championships and a national championship for junior high?
In the last three years, we've had three state championships and two national champions and will, uh, compete again in May.
That's outstanding. Outstanding work, thank you. So go ahead and share a little bit about the program, your students, and then have a student maybe share a little bit about what the program's done.
First off, I'm not saying I've been around here a long time, but somebody in this room used to be a Fishers Junior High camp, becomes a counselor for me. Mr. Holgren, how are you, sir? I still remember the story about how you got engaged on the playground at New Britain, where you met your beloved wife, I think in second grade. I still remember that. I do remember also having that rule about no love at camp. Do you remember that part too?
Let's keep going with these stories. We got all night. I love it.
Sorry. You know, there's, some people just stand out to me when I see them over there, you know, when I... Yeah, there are a few Elliot stories out there. You know, I learned a long time ago that the best thing you can do is hire great people. So I picked all these kids. I wanna have one of them talk, talk to you guys. Uh, she just found out about this about three minutes ago.
Uh, hello, I'm Kennedy Terhune. I'm in unit five at Fishers Junior High School. Uh, We the People is such a great program. It's, it's not only teaching us about constitutional law, it's teaching us about how it's applied to real life. Uh, whether it's case law or current events or any of that, it's teaching the application, which is really gonna help us further, uh, participate in our society and advocate for social change and really be the ones contributing to the leadership in our country. And I think We the People, at this age especially, is a great strive to that and continuing it at an older age is further, um, helping that. And it's giving us an outlet to express our passion because, uh, speaking for myself and a lot of my colleagues over here, we have a genuine passion for government. And being able to express that through We the People and being able to, um, converse about it with other students our age is a wonderful thing. And I think We the People is a great platform for that. And I would just like to thank our teachers, Mr. Fossil and Ms. Chandler for giving us that opportunity, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a, uh, mayor, if you would step up, we have a certificate for each one of the students. That's a good, that's a good idea.
Yeah, right in the middle. Alright, you guys. We cut him, dude? Alright, look at me.
Alright, now let's move on to another school, Hamlin Southeastern High School, state champions in high school. So Janet, would you come up and, and bring your, your team?
Uh, good evening, everyone. And, uh, this is our team, part of them. Not all of them could be here this evening, but, um, we wanna thank you for the opportunity to be honored. And, um, as, um, as Mike would say as well, we're always looking for funding. So if you know anybody who's interested in funding civics, then, you know, we, we certainly welcome that. So, um, I will, um, do one, uh, Sam is going to speak for us, which is interestingly enough, he's in the same unit that Kennedy is, who just spoke, unit five. So it's that court case unit to draw speakers.
Hi, so, uh, I'm Sam Houston, uh, meeting many of you for the first time. First, I just wanna thank you guys for bringing us here to recognize us tonight. Um, I know, on behalf of my team and Ms. Chandler, we really appreciate, uh, your support and the support of the community overall. So a little bit about what We the People is, uh, just to share kind of what we've been doing for the last semester, is that we've been learning about our constitution, our government, the philosophical principles that we built our nation upon, and how that experiment has gone on for the last, you know, two hundred, two hundred fifty years. And over that course of that time, uh, I think the most important thing we've learned is learn how to form our own opinions, defend those well, but yet disagree well, as well. Uh, as you mentioned, Mr. Zimmerman, this is a very crucial time in our history, where it's very hard to have, you know, disagreeing opinions with one another. And I think the biggest thing that we've learned is that we can disagree, but disagree in a productive manner that at the end of the day is gonna move us forward. Uh, so on behalf of my team, I just wanted to say thank you. And this program has ultimately taught us to be better leaders, better critical thinkers, better participants in our government and our society, but, uh, better people. So, yeah, thank you guys.
We're proud of you. Yeah, we'll give, uh, about a minute for them to get out. Their civic engagement ends at seven twenty-five. Alright, we're gonna move on. Thank you, everyone. Move on to the finance committee report. Councilman Stoller?
Yes, in finance committee this month, we had a general market update from our financial planner who invests our bonds for us. Um, we spoke about the flattened yield curve, the increasing interest rate, and the drop in the stock market, and the drop in the stock market, and the drop in the stock market, which seems to be a, a continual thing. I think that as we move forward, there is concerns for the economy and we plan to maneuver that, watch that. And I think the city is well-positioned to weather anything that the economy can throw at us at this point. We also spoke about the certified tech park. In twenty seventeen, we had roughly four hundred thousand from the certified tech park. This year, we had nine hundred thousand coming from the certified tech park. We also spoke about the health benefit fund that the city has and which, uh, pays the health insurance for our employees and takes good care of them. While the health fund is healthier than it has been in years past. And we are looking forward that even next year, I think it's on track to even be in...
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item seven, R121718E.
Good evening, council. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Assistant Director of Economic Development. Tonight, we have a few projects to bring before you. The first one is an amendment to a project agreement that came before you in April. This is AMP Northwest, which was part of the RFP for the Western Parcel, just northwest of the amphitheater. Flexware Innovation responded to that. And due to some utility relocation issues that have popped up in the project agreement originally, they were supposed to close by the end of the year. And we are now extending that closing date to no later than April 30th, 2019. That is the only change to the project agreement and happy to answer any sort of questions.
I'm going to make a motion to approve if there's no questions.
Any questions or comments from council? Do we need to suspend the rules on this or can we pass on? Okay, all right. Motion by Pete. I'm sorry, make sure there's no questions or comments. All right. Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to R121718F.
Tonight, we have the largest economic development project that we've done in the Nickel Plate District to date. It is the 116th Street, oh, I'm sorry. 116th Street Development. So on the, both the north and the south side, earlier this month, we announced with Browning Investments, a $157 million project. Tonight, we have the project agreement for the south side, which includes First Internet Bank's new headquarters relocating to downtown Fishers. This is a approximately 170,000 square foot office building with a parking garage and future boutique hotel. One of the things that was really important to the First Internet Team, when they began talking to us about this project, was they are, just like many other companies that we work with, talent attraction and what the strategy looks like, and creating an office space that is reflective of their culture. So they were super excited about being in a walkable area with amenities right within their own facility, but then also nearby, and being able to get incorporated into the Nickel Plate Trail vision as well. The total investment on the south side is between 90 and 100 million dollars. I have noted here that there, due to this new project, there's, and the school referendum in place, approximately $74,000 will still continue to go to the school each year. For this project, via a $26 million bond, land acquisition and development costs will be covered, as well as a garage lease and an impact fee waiver. Also important to note here that First Internet Bank, which is the entity owning this, will be SPF 15. They're very concerned about skincare and sun care. Thank you for whoever laughed. Thank you.
Oh, gosh.
No?
I just caught it.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
I thought you were shaking. It was a bad joke.
Well, it was both. I caught it and it was a bad joke, but go ahead.
They are also going to be signing a minimum taxpayer agreement with this. And with the debt coverage that we have in the Nickel Plate TIF, there is substantial coverage for this bond as well. As I'm, the previous screen, it showed the boundaries of this project, which is 116th Street to the north, Moore Street to the east, South Street to the south, and the Nickel Plate Trail on the western portion. And then the parcel plan shows where each of those entities will go, and the beautiful rendering of their new headquarters. I don't believe First Internet Bank was able to make it here tonight. They had a previously scheduled board meeting. So David Becker and Nicole Lorch, they send their greatest appreciation for the council considering this project agreement, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think one, one point of clarification, Megan did a great job summarizing everything, but we often get confused when we talk about TIFs and their impact on the schools. And in this particular case, when we talk about $74,000 a year continuing to go to the schools, that's actually new money. So when, when the school passes an operating referendum, that 22 cent rate that they have, it goes right through the TIF. So any new growth, any new development that happens in Fishers, whether it's in a TIF or it's not in a TIF, they get to collect 22 cents off every hundred dollars of assessed value. So in this particular case, if, if the council and the city is able to generate new development in a TIF district, that new development pays money to the school's operating bottom line. And so one of the things that we want to start doing in these projects is really be able to articulate and demonstrate the financial wherewithal that comes back to the school. So that's $74,000 a year is straight to their operating bucket of money on an annual basis going forward. And I believe, is that off of just this?
Just the south side.
That's just the south side. That doesn't include anything that we would be developing on the north side.
And Scott, the actual original real estate that was there, that amount of tax still continues to go?
The base stays there. Yeah, so the base that was already there today continues to go to the schools. And then all this new development that's occurring, the operating referendum passes through. And keep in mind, the vast majority of the rest of what funds the schools is state money. So I think if Mike Reuter was here, if I was channeling Mike Reuter right now, he would say, go build as much as you can in these developments because they are generating revenue for the school system.
And I, I appreciate you laying it out that way. It cuts through arguments down to just policy. You know, whether you agree or disagree, that's one thing, but it stops some of the other stuff that goes on of floating numbers or, you know, what TIFs do or don't do. So I really appreciate just getting right to the facts. Thank you for laying that out.
To add just a little bit, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Regarding this, you look at, I was talking with, with Mike Reuter a while back. I'm on the Audit Committee. They're, they're going to go through the same process that we went through, having independent audit. And we were talking about, you know, what TIF has done, what hasn't done. The, the depot and the switch, the increment that's come off, those two TIFs have paid for the additions to Hamlin Southeastern High School and Fishers High School. So the academies that are both out there were all paid for by those dollars. That's what he's telling me. So there's been some significant positive impact there.
And additionally, just to kind of clom on to where everybody's going, just to show the impact of kind of the development world which we're in right now in downtown Fishers and kind of started transforming this with the amphitheater on up, we've added zero new students to the, to the school district by putting First Internet Bank there. And then I wish David were here because I'd like to give a personal thank you. Because I remember when, you know, David contemplated a move from really Indianapolis into Fishers. And really, we couldn't even get the headquarters at that point because of the way federal charters go, et cetera, et cetera. So we thought we had a coup by just bringing David up here to kind of put, you know, a bunch of his people in a building that was lying vacant for a while into that structure. But now to see him really kind of engage and activate that south side of the street, which I've been getting constant questions on, you guys have done all the development on the north side, what's going on the south side? And I just keep telling everybody to be patient. I'm a huge proponent of this project and one that's going to talk about here very quickly. Because again, I think it continues to put Fishers on the map. I think it continues to press everything forward. I think that the Nickel Plate Trail that's coming in there has helped us in that respect, kind of drive some of this newer development, which we're going to be starting talking about now and continuing to talk about. So I think that was certainly a catalyst to getting all of this done. I do want to give a lot of credit to the mayor and the staff, because this was not an easy project to go ahead and go through to get this done. Our attorneys, both Chris and Jennifer, have probably done yeoman's work on it, I'm sure. But I, you can't have any stronger supporter than me on, on these projects which are going forward. Because I think it's going to continue to make our city, you know, really one of the greatest places in the United States to live. There's no other comments. I'll make a motion to approve.
Any other comments, questions, council?
I'll second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You got your SPF 15.
Wait till we get SPF 50.
50. Okay. All right. Something I failed to mention previously, I just want to acknowledge, Fishers High School came in second, right? Is there, they were second. And they are going to the nationals as well as the wild cards, high schools. So we, both of our high schools will be represented there. So I'm, I just want to throw that in. They've earned it as well. Moving on to R121718G.
So the second part of this project, and actually the master developer of the entire project, is Browning Investments. So tonight, we are asking the council to consider a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding. This is between the City of Fishers, Browning Investments, and Browning Real Estate Properties, which is the entity that's purchasing the properties on the north side of 116th Street for this project. As part of this MOU, they've been doing significant amount of site development work, due diligence work, and this memorandum is setting the basis for what that future partnership looks like. This isn't a project agreement, but there will be a reimbursement of services to date, approximately $35,000 that'll be issued because of this memorandum. And Browning Investments and CRG are here tonight. If, Jamie, do you want to say anything? You don't have to. You can wave.
We might make you.
Well, as, as he comes up, I want to frame this. We have three components to this plan that we announced the other day. The first one, you just approved a project agreement for First Internet Bank. The hotel is a separate project. And then on the north side of 116th Street is anticipated to be a multifamily project. Neither the multifamily project or the hotel are before you in any substantive manner tonight for a project agreement. Only First Internet Bank. The orchestrator of putting all of that together is Browning. And so Jamie and his team, we've put together this legal framework for a relationship between the two entities, the city and Jamie, or Browning, to be able to put all that together over the next 30, 60, 90, 120 days. Because there's just a lot of moving pieces. So that'll turn over to Jamie.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you for your consideration in this matter. By the way, I'm Jamie Browning with Browning Investments. We've been working on this project for quite some time. This has been a large assembly of parcels, specifically in, on the north side, where this is six or seven parcels that were, we've assembled. And then multiple parcels on the south side that was assembled for this project. All in, we expect to, on this particular side that you're seeing right now, is, is you'll see an apartment complex, retail, and office, and a parking garage on the south side, which you just heard about, is First Internet Bank, parking garage boutique hotel, which will be in our, in our area to take care of or develop. The boutique hotel is about 110 rooms, and will be unique in its own style, and will carry a major brand as, as the, our partner and, and host of that particular project. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from council?
And again, our cadence would be, we think we could be back here in January on the north side of the road with an economic development agreement. And then the, the hotel will probably play out over the next two, three months before we'll be back for a project agreement with that. But just want to alert everybody to what the public process will be going forward.
Any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
And David abstains. One abstention. All right, motion passes. Moving on to R121718H.
Tonight, piggybacking off of our first resolution that we discussed, AMP West is a new project agreement that we're bringing before you tonight. As a partner to AMP Northwest, which is an entity spinoff of Flexware Innovation, as they began developing the site to the west of the amphitheater, it seemed that there was a, really a missed opportunity if they didn't begin pursuing a second office building here. So AMP West is proposing to build an 8,000 square foot office building. And it will be similar to the style of the renderings from the first slides that I showed. So two stories, 4,000 square foot floor plate, and most likely they have a tenant already lined up. They've had significant success filling their first building with their headquarters and see that demand continuing for office space in downtown Fishers. As part of this project, it's very similar to their first agreement. They're going to be paying $20,000 for this property. In return, the City of Fishers will do a seven-year, seven-year real property tax abatement on a scaling, or a declining scale. We'll be doing the parking spaces and the adjacent parking lot, bringing utilities to the site, and offering a fee waiver and an infrastructure allowance for approximately $50,000, $56,000 for streetscape along municipal. So we really think that this is going to help round out the ellipse development and set the stage for just every, all of the activity that's going on in the amphitheater. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. And also, Scott Whitlock is here tonight. If you say a couple words?
Greetings, council. Scott Whitlock, for the record. Just one other comment Megan mentioned about tenants. We do have an engineering firm that's a tenant committed to this building, as well as a financial planning firm already committed. So professionals in that building, for sure. Excited about the project.
Great, great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Only a comment, Scott. It's been a pleasure. Enjoy working with you. Scott's on the Nickel Plate Trail Committee with Leah and myself. And I really appreciate your commitment to our community. And it's great to have you with us. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to R121718D.
All right, our final economic development item tonight is a declaratory resolution for DMC Insurance. A couple weeks ago, it was announced that DMC Insurance purchased 10-500 Crosspoint Boulevard, which is the former CMG Worldwide Building. If you're passing it along 69 on the west side, it had all of the famous dead people's faces along it. Those are now gone. But as part of DMC Insurance, they just recently opened up, or organized in 2016. Their former Baldwin Lyons executives, super successful and have already ramped up to 26 employees, amazing wages. And they're anticipating adding 50 new employees. They're currently in the Wiley Building on a lease and had an opportunity to purchase this building, expand their operations, and really establish Fishers as their, their main headquarters. And as part of their move into the CMG Worldwide Building, has a lot of character to it right now. But they have some significant plans for renovating it and making it work for their, for their office operations. So as some additional assistance to them, the City of Fishers is offering a five-year, 100% real property tax abatement only on the assessed, or the increased assessed value caused from the renovations. So DMC Insurance understands that it's all based off of the assessor's office, that this could be, that that amount won't be off of the existing tax revenue that they currently have on the building. So the existing $72,000 that are paid in taxes each year, that will remain. Again, it's just any sort of increased assessed value that would be considered here tonight. And unfortunately, they weren't able to join us either, but send their appreciation. And happy, and so as part of this, we're asking tonight to declare this as an economic revitalization area. And then at the next council, we would bring the confirmatory resolution for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions. If you're passing it along sixty-nine on the west side, it had all of the, the famous dead people's faces along it. Um, those are now gone, but as part of DMC Insurance, um, they just recently opened up, or organized in two thousand and sixteen. Their former Baldwin Lyons executives, super successful and have already ramped up to twenty-six employees, amazing wages, and they're anticipating adding fifty new employees. Um, they're currently in the Wiley Building on a lease and had an opportunity to purchase this building, expand their operations, and really establish Fisher's as their, um, their main headquarters. And as part of their move into the CMG Worldwide Building, um, has a lot of character to it right now, um, but they have some significant plans for renovating it and making it work for their, um, for their office operations. So as, um, some additional assistance to them, the City of Fisher's is offering a five-year, um, one hundred percent real property tax abatement only on the assessed, or the increased assessed value caused from the renovations. So, um, DMC Insurance understands that it's all based off of the assessor's office, that this could be, um, that that amount won't be off of the existing, um, tax revenue that they currently have on the building. Um, so the existing seventy-two thousand dollars that are paid in taxes each year, that will remain. Um, again, it's just any sort of increased assessed value that would be considered here tonight. And unfortunately, they weren't able to join us either, but send their appreciation. Um, and happy, and so as part of this, we're asking tonight to declare this as an economic revitalization area, and then at the next council, we would bring the, um, confirmatory resolution for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Could we have a second page filled out and be sent to us? As we make the motion, we're making a motion on the white paper.
Yes, absolutely, I apologize.
So that the public knows that they're looking, what we're going on.
Sure, absolutely.
And so any question, other questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to one two one seven one eight E.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Ross Siller, and I'm a planner here with the City of Fisher's. Before you tonight, you're seeing ordinance number one two one seven one eight E, which is the Richer Reserve PUD rezoning. Uh, the property is located at seven eight seven seven East one hundred and sixth Street, just west of the Stubbleworth Engineering Office and the future nickel plate trail. Uh, the property is approximately twelve and a half acres, and it is currently zoned, uh, C-one commercial. Uh, the proposed zoning is a, a PUD with permitted use of age restricted senior apartments. Uh, before you hear is the proposed concept plan that is included in the PUD. You'll see here that Real America, who is the petitioner, is planning to construct two sixty-five unit three-story buildings with a variety of amenities included outside. Uh, as a note, the petitioner has agreed to grant additional right-of-way per the engineering department's request along one hundred and sixth Street, uh, for a future trail connection to the west. Uh, petitioner has provided the council with an example of the scale and design of the concept. Again, you'll see that it's a three-story, uh, sixty-five unit building. Uh, the architecture design statements are reflected and incorporated in illustrations here, um, in the PUD, and they're a benchmark with a variety of high-quality building materials, including brick, masonry, and hardy plank as well. I also wanted to show you an example of existing, uh, community that Real America has constructed down in Nashville, Indiana. This is a similar product as to what we, uh, are seeing here tonight with the Richer Reserve PUD. A little bit about the timeline, in September, the architecture and site, uh, plan was approved by the PUD committee. In October, staff began the voluntary annexation, uh, process that will be concluded on the twentieth of December. In November, Plan Commission made a favorable, uh, unanimous recommendation, uh, to city council, and tonight, we're seeing a final reading of the Richer Reserve PUD rezone. Uh, with that, uh, staff recommends the city council holds that final reading and approve the rezone of the Richer Reserve PUD. The petitioner is here with a short presentation as well. We'll be both happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagery Baker Daniels, and I'm pleased to be here representing Real America. From Real America with me is Rhonda Waybright, the president and owner, and Jeff Ryan, the vice president, uh, for Real America. Uh, Ross did a great job giving you an update on the proposal. The only things I would add to that is, back in, uh, October, we had a neighbors' meeting, and we had, uh, we hosted at Real America's offices, uh, that are right there at one hundred and sixth and Hague Road. We had a number of people attended, uh, provided a lot of information once most of them understood and heard about the project. Uh, we answered a lot of their questions. We provided then, uh, a more exhaustive update for the neighbors, uh, that was then circulated around, that's in your packet, that, so you saw everything that we sent to them. At the Plan Commission, there was no remonstrance, and then, as Ross mentioned, both the PUD committee and the, uh, Plan Commission voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to you. Uh, so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for us, otherwise, we respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
We did, yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council?
Make a motion to approve.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, sorry, David.
Yeah, part, part of what I'm dealing with is, uh, I mean, we spent several months working on this about a year ago, and we changed it from industrial to commercial, and I've had, as you guys know, a lot of different HOA meetings. A lot of times, I've had the HOA meetings, and I've said to the neighbors, uh, we change it to this, so it would be similar to a Stubbleworth. So now, project comes through, um, and it's, it's a little different than that. So, a lot of times, when we make changes, I think it's good if we stick to that, but, uh, I don't know that somebody's coming through right off the bat for that, so this is something a little different. So I just wanted to point that out as one thing. The second thing is, um, Steve, can you clarify? So there's an age restriction, but then is there also an income? Not restriction, but an in, it's income-based?
There, there, it, yes, I can clarify that. So first off, there, in the PUD ordinance, there is an age restriction, uh, that provides, it's at the first page inside of the PUD ordinance under the permitted use. We specifically defined, working with the staff, what an age restricted senior apartments would be, and that means that, uh, each unit would have at least one occupant who's at least fifty-five years old or older, and no one under forty can reside within the development. So this is age restricted, we put into the ordinance just like we said. Uh, the ordinance itself does not have anything about what the rents would be or anything like that. Uh, that's something that the, uh, developer, Real America, is committed to providing, uh, if they can, if it gets approved, to be able to provide, one of the buildings would be affordable. And so that would have, um, and we, we put in our materials what the approximate rents would be and what the income, uh, requirements would be today, if that would be, be pursued today. So it's not known whether they would get that approved to be able to do it that way, that's what they would like to do. Uh, we shared that with everybody as we went along. Thank you.
So how do we make it market rate all the way through?
Well, that's not what they would, they don't want to do that, they believe it's a, it's a positive for the community to be able to offer that here in the, in the community.
I understand, that's their standpoint, but for me, I'm just asking, how do we make it market rate all the way through? With this request, or is it a different request that would come through later?
Uh, there's nothing that they would need to be requesting of the city at that point.
Understand what I'm asking, though? I mean, they've got a certain, people come through, and they've got apartment projects, and most of them are market rate, and then this one's a, a blending of that, and I understand that, I understand that's their request, but I'd rather have the request be what others are, which is a market rate, uh, product type.
Yeah, and again, I don't mean to not, uh, answer your question. Are you asking, would they agree to not seek it, uh, to be able to have the affordable?
I guess if, if we ask it that way, and it, and if that carries through with this vote, then yes, I would ask it that way.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's not what they're requesting, so no, I, they would not, they would not want to commit tonight to not seek the ability to be able to offer one of the buildings as affordable. I mean, that's what they believe is, is important, and they believe that's part of their mission to be able to offer that.
Okay. We'll make a motion and see how this goes. I'm sorry.
Is that all, do you want anything else? Any other questions? Okay.
Can I, can I make a motion real quick to see what I get?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, for, to approve. Uh, I know that the age restriction's already there, but I'd make a motion to approve with the understanding that they would not, uh, go for an income-based, it would be market rate.
And I guess my comments on that would be, I, I believe, if my understanding from the development side of Real America, Steve, is that they would not pursue the project at that point. Would that be a fair statement?
You mean, if the council voted that way tonight?
Correct.
Um, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, their plan, as I've said, is that they-
Well, if I understand, I mean, one of the things that, that I certainly understand about Real America is the passion for, you know, those type of projects, right? The passion comes from, you know, long-term, in terms of certainly a community trying to put in affordable housing and, and, and do those projects not only here in Indiana, but around the country, right? And that's part of what their charter is, really, is, is my understanding. So I, I would be very reluctant to support something like that, because I think, you know, we had a really good reading of Plan Commission. I appreciate David's comments, I, I think that, you know, it was kind of an abandoned parcel. But we got really favorable readings from the residents, as far as I was concerned, because I expected maybe there to be a little bit more pushback, there was really none, as I recall, in, in Planning Commission, unless I missed something, Brad, and you recall. Um, you know, I certainly appreciate David's comments, but I'm, I would not be supportive of that because I don't believe this project would go forward, and I believe there is a place for this type of project, and-
And, and what we're-
That's where I'm at, so.
And, and you're right, that's what we did talk about, that there's a certain righteousness for, this is senior affordable.
Correct.
And so there's a lot of people that are retired, that are no longer making an income, they could still have retirement savings, and they would be qualified for it. And so, I mean, I think there's a, there's a mission here to be able to meet a need in the community, so they, they would not want to agree to that. Respectfully.
Well, I, I know that there, there is a need for more housing for, for seniors who are on a fixed income, people with disabilities. Um, can you just share a little bit about how this is different? When you say affordable, so that people understand that it's not section eight? I think that's been kind of the fear, or, I don't, the apprehension, or people wanting, wanting to know, is this section eight?
Sure, great.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Ryan, Vice President of Development for Real America. And so the kind of financing that we'd be looking for on this is rental housing tax credits. And so what that does is, the residents have to pay their rent, and we're looking at rent here on the affordable in the eight hundred to nine hundred and fifty-dollar range. Um, and so it's just that the residents would have to make under a certain amount. And so that's, uh, depending on if it's a one or two-person household, that's thirty-two to thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So it's, as you said, it's people who are living on social security, they do have, maybe they've sold a house, so they've got some, you know, money in the bank for that, but they don't have a pension, they aren't working anymore. Uh, it's, so they can stay in the community where their support network is.
So to be clear, there, this will have, be like, uh, be a low-income housing credit project, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that is our goal, I mean, we're, we're, we're moving forward with one of them as being market rate, and it's a very competitive system to be able to, uh, to win the rental housing tax credits. Um, and so if we think that the scoring might be favorable for us, then we'd like to apply, uh, for that, if not, then we won't.
And then Jeff, real quick, can you clarify, it sounds like Pete heard something different when I talked to you, which is, if it were all market rate, would you move forward with it? I had heard from you that you would, it sounds like Pete heard the opposite. Can you help us clarify that?
Um, I mean, our goal is to do it with one of them being affordable, um-
I understand.
So.
But if it weren't, if both of them were market rate, would you move forward with it?
I believe so, uh, that would be a question for Rhonda.
That's fine, thank you.
Next.
So, um, yeah, it is my passion for affordable housing, it's, it's what I do, I'm sorry, Rhonda Waybright with Real America. Um, it is what I do, I also do, um, moderate, um, income housing. I'm working on several senior developments across the state. Uh, we've also done straight-up market rate housing, um, adaptive reuse, different things, um, in kind of a boutique style. There's a difference between, you know, we, we've, we've laid this property out, uh, with a product that's been very successful on our affordable side, and also one that we're moving forward with on a market rate side in Fort Wayne. Um, it's a different price point, as we just, as Jeff just explained, for the rent structure, it's the same building. Um, it's the same components, it's the same, um, you know, community spaces, those kinds of things. So what we would like to do is, is blend and, and offer an affordable opportunity for seniors over fifty-five. There's a difference between, in my mind, if we go forward and, and we build the first one as market rate, it could be hugely successful and have a waiting list of two hundred people, that would be great. That still wouldn't change my passion and goal to build the second one as affordable. So if we have the opportunity to get credits, and we feel that we would be competitive, I would absolutely want to do that, because I think it's the right thing to do, and it's what I do. Um, there's a difference between whether we chose to do that and move forward because we couldn't get housing credits, because we gave a good shot and made this, you know, tried to make this happen. But if a council tells me I can't because of an income restriction, we probably would walk away from the deal. So it's just who I am. So that is where, um, I think if you want to look at the way it's built, the quality of the housing, and the restriction on age, I'm fine with that, but I have a hard time accepting that it would be income restricted. So that's my passion, I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Don't be sorry.
No, yep, that's, you don't have nothing to apologize for, just share your heart. Um, any questions?
Just one other, a comment, so for, in order for you to get the tax credits, each individual, e- each building has to be separated. So you can't build the apartments and integrate both affordable and market rate within the same building? In other words, so that you have residents living there that, you know, are paying less because, you know, they're on a fixed income, but in other words, you know, so it's, it's both situations.
So we, we have a development right now in, uh, the northern part of the state that is mixed, and we will share facilities, um, between the market rate and the affordable units. They are separately owned because we, we, um, the financing structure is different, so we sell the tax credits, so they have to have separate ownership parcels. These would be split into two ownership pieces, but, um, because of the style of building, we will have the same, um, community-type spaces in each building, so that our residents, who are typically in their eighties, some in their nineties, they won't have to leave the building if they, if they want, you know, if they want to stay in their own building and, and, you know, use the community spaces or those kinds of things. But there's nothing that we would, we would prevent our residents from using the other building. If they have friends in the other building, we would encourage that, that's just a great, you know, environment and friendship for them. So, um, they absolutely could share, but we would have, um, separate spaces set up in the buildings. So that, basically for their comfort, not for anything else. Does that answer your question?
I guess the question was just integrating both into, into the, both buildings. So in other words, within the comp, within the building itself, you have both?
Oh, yeah, and, well, we-
That, that was the question.
Yeah, we could, and we have, that would be a, a split deal, and we could do that, but again, it would still involve, um, an application of tax credits to, to do that. So we've just committed to building the first building as a moderate-rate income market rate deal first, and then look at the second piece later as a separate.
Alright, so we have a motion by David, uh, just want, any other questions on his motion? And then I would ask if there's a second, is that where I need to go from here? Okay, so are, any other questions on David's motion? No questions? Is there a second for his motion? No second? Alright, that dies, is that correct?
I'll make a motion to approve as is. I'll second.
Alright, motion by Pete, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nay, David's a nay, anyone else? Alright, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Alright, moving on to one two one seven one eight F.
Again, for the record, my name is Ross Siller, you're a planner here with the City of Fisher's. Before you tonight, you have ordinance number one two one seven one eight F, which is the first, second, and public hearing for the voluntary annexation of the Sharp Printing property. Sharp Printing recently relocated to the intersection of Allisonville Road and one hundred and eleventh Street on approximately one and a half acres. Uh, this is their current site plan, Sharp Printing did obtain a variance for the parking, uh, back in October due to the small size of the lot, as you can see here. They are currently in the process of a site plan approval for landscaping and, uh, the new parking lot, um, which is currently on our December tack agenda, uh, which is this Thursday. Uh, the proposed elevation, uh, the renov- uh, this is the proposed, excuse me, elevation of the renovated, uh, storefront. I don't know if you guys have driven down, um, Allisonville lately, but it, uh, it's looking really good. Um, Sharp Printing moved into this location back in November after remodeling, uh, the interior of the building. Uh, the current timeline tonight, again, is the proposed common, uh, combined first and second reading and the public hearing. Um, January two thousand and nineteen, council, um, staff will bring you the fiscal plan with a, through a resolution and the ordinance back, uh, for its third reading. And as you know, due to the upcoming census, the earliest effective date for annexation is January of two thousand and twenty. Uh, with that, staff recommends that city council holds a combined first and second reading and a public hearing for the voluntary annexation of Sharp Printing. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, any, um, any, well, let me go ahead and do this, we're going to open up for public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Step forward and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Alright, my name's Brett Anderson, I live at eighty-eight ninety-nine Mole Drive, right over here. Um, I've been a resident of Fisher's for thirty-five years, going on thirty-five years. When I first moved here, me and my wife, we had a seven-man police department, volunteer fire department, one little school. So what I want to say tonight is, I, I absolutely love living here in Fisher's. I've got the best fire department, the best police department, a library that's second to none. I can get to anywhere, you can eat a different place every night of the month. My concern is, I've been a spectator to all this change over the years. Um, not warm and fuzzy over the nickel plate, it's fine. But recently, one street over from my street, Real America, going to build some apartments. Residents aren't real happy about they were tr- how they were treated. I've got South Village to the west, some people are still there, some aren't. I've got, I used to have a beautiful view of the sunrise, but now I've got a, a privacy fence that got put up, sound barrier. My question is, where I live- My question is, where I live is a pretty prime piece of property. And my concern is that, as a resident and a taxpayer, I would ask that a little more consideration for longtime residents in the way of communication. I mean, I remember when the mayor was, took over when the town manager left. And I, I just absolutely love living here, but if I get a knock on the door and a developer says, "Hey, we're buying your property", out you go. And I don't want to be the price of progress, collateral damage, whatever, whatever it's called. I don't know, I guess I should get more involved in government, maybe. I just turned 60. My anxiety is over my future. House is almost paid. I'd love to live here, but, you know, the, the lines of communication are sometimes not the best. I watched your video the other night, and you said the ribbon cutting ceremony is usually anticlimactic because you're on to the next project. My request is that, when my house becomes the next project, that I would find out ahead of, well, developers or my other neighbors. Like I drive up here tonight, the street light's going out on lantern. I still don't have a sidewalk to walk on. The traffic limit is, it's 25 mile an hour, and people just flat-out fly through there. So my concern is, and I see people walking all the time from the apartments further down, residents, and somebody's going to get hit, is my first concern.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir.
Are we done?
Yeah, we're on time limit. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Maybe if I could, Todd, because I think, I think this is important, and I appreciate your comments, sir. This council today, and in my administration, has always taken the perspective that we would never take someone out of their homes. No one in any of our economic development deals has ever been forced to leave their home. Developers have been able to come to agreements with individuals like yourself that say, "We're willing to sell at a certain price", and that's actually a discussion between you and the developer. Now, what I would encourage you or anybody in your neighborhood is, we don't always know when developers are knocking on your door. In fact, we find out a lot of times after the fact when they come in and say, "Hey, I've got eight parcels assembled and I want to go do a project." I strongly encourage you to reach out to myself or Megan in the Economic Development Team or our Planning Department and just say, "Hey, what's going on? What's happening?" And also, if someone knocks on your door and you're not sure what, what the story is, we can give you the quick lowdown on whether, you know, that's something we're aware of, something we're not aware of. But I, and I don't want to speak for the council, but it has never been our perspective that we're trying to force anybody out of those homes. If you and a private entity decide to come to an agreement on selling your home, more power to you and we'll, we'll try to redevelop. But I appreciate you bringing this forward, because it probably is a message that we need to get out to the folks around there. Because there are, now with all this activity, there's lots of developers who are knocking on a whole lot of people's doors. And we can help provide some information on, you know, what's happening. If, if we know of something going on, whether that's someone you should be talking to or someone you should stay away from. We can have all those conversations. But I appreciate you bringing that comment forward. And it informs us on communicating going forward, so I appreciate that.
I know I used all my time, but I really appreciate the effort that everybody puts into managing this growth. It's not an easy task. I understand that. A lot of money, money quarterbacks out there, but you guys are ahead of the game, which is a whole different ballgame.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this specific, specific item of this voluntary annexation? Step forward, state your name and address for the record. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Have first reading.
First reading? All right, thank you. Moving on to-
Can I get clarification on the census?
So the comment was, in a year before a decennial census, you're not allowed to annex any property. So all the annexations that we'll do in 2019 will have an effective date of 2020. Yeah.
All right, moving on to 121718G.
Good evening, council. Lindsay Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight in an ordinance that amends our current truck parking restrictions. A few weeks ago, we started eating calls from residents and HOAs saying that there are semi-trucks being parked in some of our vacant lots around the city. Recently, it's become more of a problem, and residents have reached out to us asking what we could do about it. So our planning and zoning director, Tony Bugatto, actually took action, and he reached out to other communities around Indiana to see how they're handling this situation and actually even reached outside state lines to get some feedback. He actually drafted this ordinance, and together with the police department and myself, we came together with this final version. Originally, we had kept the 1-ton requirement or the restriction that is in the current ordinance. But the feedback we received from residents was, "Hey, this could be an F-350. This is my take-home commercial vehicle", and that's certainly not our intention, is to limit, you know, take-home vehicles or, you know, any larger truck. Our intention is to limit semi-trucks that are parking in parking lots. Parking lots are obviously not intended for semi-truck use overnight or for long periods of time. We chose the, instead of the 1-ton, we went to a 10,000-pound limit. And we chose that because that's the weight class that you start getting into when you start looking at flatbed trucks or box trucks. The building commissioner and the planning and zoning department did contact some of the businesses that would be affected by this, had great feedback. They're, and they're in support of this ordinance, and they're actually going to work with our Public Works Department to try to formulate some signage and determine where those are going to go. I know there's been a lot of concerns about this ordinance, so I'm happy to answer any questions about the actual language. And Chief Gapphart is also here. If you have any questions about the public safety aspect of the ordinance.
Well, first of all, I just want to say, I absolutely support this. I've had residents reach out. My, my kids, as well as a lot of kids in our neighborhood, walked down, we live in Meadowbrook, and walked down to Subway and some different stuff down in there. And I don't like just the feel when you go by in the evening when there's a bunch of trucks, semis pulling up there for the night. Not accusing anybody of doing anything, but it just, things can happen. And I just don't feel like it's a place to loiter, and so that's, I'm pretty strong on this. And I've, I've heard from multiple residents, a lot of our family friends concerned, have kids our age, are concerned about that. So, it's me. Any questions or comments?
Certainly, I kind of, you know, really boils down to me, it's my, my constituents, I think Brad had a number that, especially the, the old Marsh or 116th and Brook School was a real problem. It was becoming the Flying J truck stop out there, and we wanted to do something. I want to thank Chief Gapphart for him going out and taking a look at things. I sent him a text and he was right on it. So I'm absolutely supportive of this as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to suspend or approve on first reading.
A motion to suspend by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Any unfinished new business? All right, I'll go ahead, time closer for our community comment section. So this is an opportunity for you to just come forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. You do not have to speak on any item on our agenda. You can speak just about what's going on in the city, what you, what you love about the city and what maybe, you know, we can improve on in 2019. I don't think there's a lot to improve on, but, you know, what can improve on 2019? So if you would, you can step forward, state your name and address for the record. With no one stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close the community comment section.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Pete.
And Todd, real quick, I'll second it, but before I do that, just thank you for your efforts this year. I know it's your rotation with the gavel. It's always fun. And I think you've been good about getting information out to everybody. I just appreciate your efforts.
I, I appreciate my fellow council members. It's been fun to be president this year. I will be making a motion in January for Rich to take over the reins. But I really appreciate everybody's efforts. I can tell you, just as an individual, one person on a council, nobody's up here for limelight. Everybody really has their heart for the community. And I, you can see it in what they do every day, so I just would extend that for, you know, the holidays, just to be thankful for each person here. Thank you for Mayor Fadness and his staff for working well alongside us and respecting each individual here and respecting each other's voice. So I really appreciate it. So thank you, everyone, for a wonderful 2018, and the best is yet to come. So with that, we have this first, we're adjourned. Thank you.